It was a good, I'd like to call the September 16th meeting to order. If we could start with a moment of silence. If you would, join me with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everyone who has joined us today. We are always happy to have you with us. We follow a written agenda, which is available on our website at SalisburyNC.gov/Agendas. City council meetings are broadcast on WSRG, our local TV government station, which is available on Spectrum, Channel 16, and Hotwire, Channel 394. Meeting air times are posted on the station's website at WSRGTV.com. You can also watch current and past city council meetings on demand from the city's website at SalisburyNC.gov/Videos. Tonight, before we move on to the adoption of the agenda, I would like to start with a special presentation. If I might, could call up Mr. Justin Summers. He is the Regional Director of the Office of the U.S. Senator Ted Budd, and he is here tonight with a special presentation. Welcome, Justin.
Thank you so much for having me. It's an honor to be with you today. So the presentation that I have today for the city of Salisbury and for the Alexander family are remarks in the Congressional Record that Senator Budd entered in memory of Mayor Karen Alexander. And I just want to, I want to thank you, Mayor Sheffield, and council for giving us this opportunity to be here tonight to make this presentation on behalf of Senator Budd. I will, I will read the Congressional Record, and before I do that, I just want to say that, you know, when I started in this role with Senator Budd as Regional Director, almost, well, a little over two years ago, Mayor Alexander was one of the first mayors that I got to know in my 23-county region that I cover, and getting to see her vision for this city was truly inspirational. So I appreciate the time that I, while it was very short, I appreciate the time that I got to spend with Mayor Alexander. Congressional Record, the proceedings and debates of the 119th Congress First Session, Volume 171, Number 87, Washington, Thursday, May 22nd, 2025. In the United States Senate, honoring Mayor Karen Alexander. Madam President, I rise today to memorialize the servant leader of the great state of North Carolina. Mayor Karen Alexander of Salisbury went to her heavenly home far too soon on Sunday, December 29th, 2024, at the age of 73 years young. Her colleagues and I will remember her as a loving, caring, and kind leader, always putting the needs of her city and the people she served above herself. She lived her life by the teachings of the Apostle Paul to Timothy, "And a servant of the Lord must not quarrel, but be gentle to all, able to teach, patient, in humility correcting those who are in opposition. If God perhaps will grant them repentance so that they may know the truth." Second Timothy 2:24-25. As an architect by trade, she founded her firm in 1989, where she led numerous renovation and design projects across the city. She was first selected to the city council in 2013, not long after she began serving as mayor of Salisbury from 2015 to 2017, and later returned to the office in 2019. She served as president and board member of the North Carolina League of Municipalities. Her initiatives as mayor brought new life to Salisbury's historic downtown area, improved public safety, and made life better for the city's residents. Throughout her career in public service, she was known for building consensus with class and grace. Her relationships with her colleagues are described as being genuinely invested in the success of others. Her loving family will remember her as nurturing and supportive, and as her daughter-in-law, Kristi Mason-Almazahn, shared, "Karen had a way of making you feel like the very center of her attention. Her love was immense, and her presence was radiant." Madam President, the motto, the motto for the state of North Carolina is esse quaem videri, Latin for "to be rather than to seem." I believe that Mayor Karen Alexander of Salisbury truly lived up to that standard and set the bar even higher. Now I ask that you join me in a moment of silence to honor the memory of Mayor Karen Alexander, a great North Carolinian who dedicated her life to public service. I yield the floor, Senator Ted Budd, United States Senator from North Carolina. I'd like to ask the family to come up, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Thank you, Justin, so much, and again, always thank you to the Alexander family, Henry, Daniel, and Kristi. We love you all, and it won't stop. So thank you for being here. Moving on, another item before we do the adoption of the agenda. We had announced a public hearing in regards to a proposed amendment to a land development ordinance, specifically to update Phase 2 of a stormwater ordinance to make a minor adjustments in our Chapter 9. This public hearing has been postponed. The matter will be brought before council at a later date. At this point, I would like to move on to Agenda Item Number 4, Adoption of the Agenda. Council, is there a motion?
Motion to adopt the agenda is presented.
Excuse me, could we pull one of the items?
From the agenda?
From the council, I mean, from the consent agenda.
We can do that when we get to the consent.
Okay.
Yes, if you'd like, yes. So, Mr. Jackson, you make a motion to adopt the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Agenda Item Number 5, Mayor, to proclaim the following observances. Constitution Week, which is September the 17th through the 23rd of 2025. Customer Service Week, October 6th through the 10th, 2025. Fire Prevention Week, October 5th through 11th, 2025. Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October of 2025. And Rowan County United Way Month, October 25. Item Number 6, Council to consent, to consider the consent agenda. We did receive the consent agenda in advance. I believe Councilmember Clutz, you were saying?
Yes. Yes, I'd like to pull Item B separate, out of that, please.
Okay, council, we're going to pull a consent agenda, Item Number B, for discussion after the consent agenda. Is everyone okay with that amendment to the consent agenda? If so, then can I please get a motion to adopt the amended consent agenda?
A move.
Have a motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. So we'll create an Agenda Item 6B and discuss this item. Mr. Green?
Yes, Mayor, members in council, I'd like to invite Jared Mathis, our Transportation Director, to come forward. This item involves reserving some parking on Main Street to improve a building, and I'll let Mr. Mathis share that with council and take any questions he may have.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council, good to see you. This, this project here, we have 126 and 128 North Main Street. It's right next to COB, our City of Salisbury building. We have three parking spots that are proposed for, I guess, reservation per se for the construction. They're remodeling this building, putting apartments and some rental retail space in the front. But we have, it's been pulled, the concern, I guess, is the duration, is my understanding. However, we have the contractor here, Bryson's in the audience with us, and he can kind of elaborate more on what the renovations are and his intentions are with the building, if need be.
So I think, yes, I would think six months is the duration for parking spaces in our downtown area. I think my concern is the time frame of which we are going to lose three parking spaces. So my question is, are those all-day losses? How can we, you know, is it day and night? Are they just blocked off? Are they using them periodically? There is no form or fashion that I can see that we would allow us to lose three parking spaces full-time for our holiday season, for our downtown businesses. We also have a holiday parade, so we have some considerations versus just the carte blanche of you get these three spaces. So I would be, I would like to hear more about that and what are our options on this.
Well, I appreciate that, Mayor. We, the right-of-way use permit itself limits the contractor to not be there during major events like Sherwin Parade. And contractors actually stated that he would not be there on holidays. So that's, that's what I just found out just a few minutes ago. They do have access at the rear. Well, currently, they have four spaces that I believe they're utilizing. Two of them are dumpsters. So they're not bringing all their dumpsters and putting them on Main Street. They're actually using the rear of the building and also the portage on as well. So, but the extent of the permit kind of limits them to, you know, not during the major events. That's about the summation.
So it's-
So they can use those spots 24 hours a day if they need be.
Right, and I think that's a concern. We have holiday shopping that's going to start. We know that we are going to have an upset in the following holiday season because we are going to start working on our Main Street project, hopefully. And to, to take away from them before that, I have a concern about. So I'd like to know how do we, like, weekends, things like that. I would like to see how we limit certain things. I'm open to any suggestions from anybody about how we ensure we maintain our business, you know, access to these spaces.
Mayor, could I make a suggestion?
Yes, please.
Could we limit the amount of time, maybe say, two months, and reconsider have it come back to us after, after a couple of months? Would that be possible? So I'm just thinking about Christmas, to limit our parking downtown at Christmas. I don't want to do anything to hurt our businesses.
Right.
It's just a thought.
Right.
We, we've had this question before directly across the street, and the way the developer, the owner of that property handled it was, he came to us and basically said, "These are the hours I need it," and he didn't have it all the time. "If any of us try to eat downtown on a Friday night, you cannot find a parking space. It's really difficult on Friday nights." So, for example, after 4 o'clock on Fridays, you know, I don't know how much is taking place on Friday night, and how much work they can be doing after that, and Saturdays. I think there's a way to piece it together, but I think it should be pieced together based on what they tell us their work needs are going to be. And I forget exactly what we did with Shawn Campion across the street, but when we had the same discussion, he came back to us and says, "Well, how about I have it two days a week between these hours," or whatever he did. And we made arrangements in the back, which caught a little bit of flack, but it kept Main Street open. And he has less space in the back than these two buildings have in the back. I mean, they've been vacant for a long time, so I'm glad something's happening to it. I think we have to praise, you know, the developer for this, but I think we should try to work together in a way that doesn't hamper Friday nights, doesn't hamper Saturdays. And, and we have it there during his heavy construction hours when he needs it. That's also pretty heavy in the mornings at the courthouse. I mean, I was in courthouse this morning. I'll tell you what, 10 o'clock in the morning, you know, you can't find a space in the 200 block of South Main. You can't find a space on Council Street in either direction. You can't find a space virtually all the way up to the square. I mean, I've had days I've had to go to court. I've had to park in front of the plaza. It's the closest space you can get, you know, on court days. So, I mean, those spaces are used.
Is it possible to maybe hear from the developer at this time and see what their plans are, how they, how they want to utilize that parking space?
Yes, agreed, yes. Thank you for developing in our downtown. You just need to make sure that we're keeping everybody in business at the same time, so.
I understand, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. There are a lot of considerations that you, you need to make. I'm a citizen of Salisbury, so I've seen the development projects that have kind of gone on. And I'll be a little honest, I, I think you guys are doing a good job of being thorough, and you should hold us to a high standard for your development in your downtown. But I've seen other projects go on over the years that have taken way too long and have blocked off parking spaces. So there is a little part of me that I don't take it personally, but there is a little part of me that says, "Why am I the one that's going, that's going through this?" Because-
I think you've not been the only one that we've asked of, so.
Well, I mean, I've just seen, Mayor, with all due respect, I've seen projects go on for years, a year and a half now with parking spaces closed. And I know of another project that started without a building permit. They had a city permit, so they did demolition, and they took things down to the studs. And they have a right-of-way permit, and if they've got a right-of-way permit and they couldn't even get building inspections, they're not really making progress either. But I'm not here to argue on those bases. You guys asked an important question, so I'm going to try to give you those answers. We do not have any intentions of working late on Friday nights. Would we work on a Saturday? If you tell me I cannot work on a Saturday, then I'm not going to work on a Saturday, or I'll find other arrangements. Our situation is a little unique. Councilmember Post is right. Well, he's right in the sense that we do have space in the back of the building. I can't compare it to across the street because I haven't been back there. But in my view, the ordinance has some limitations, and I'm not trying to sidestep the ordinance in any way, but I'm trying to do things in a responsible manner. I do not like the idea that the ordinance allows me to park dumpsters on Main Street because dumpsters do not move. Workers' vehicles move. They can be moved at any time. When we're not working, they're not there. Dumpsters are allowed by the ordinance, and dumpsters are more permanent. They're only picked up when the trash company comes to get them. Our dumpsters are in the back for that reason. Also, our temporary bathrooms, I don't believe that they belong on Main Street, so we're putting them in the back of the building. Those are conscious choices that I've made to try to do this in a responsible way, but by doing that, I've limited my parking in the back of the building. What we've got going on right now is the three spots, they're only allowed for work trucks anyway. And anytime that the staff has approached us with a concern, because they're right next door, we've been very proactive in trying to remedy their concerns. I would say within an hour, if they thought we were in a violation of something, within an hour, we've got it cleaned up. So we have a building here where we're putting in eight new apartments. It's a large project. We've also got to do a public extension on a fire line behind our building that our developer's paying for that's going to wipe out a lot of the back alley when we go to do that. So I really do not have a lot of room. So I really do not have a lot of room for this project. We're parking cars, the three work trucks on Main Street. We're able to get one or two cars beside our dumpsters in the back of the building. And then the rest of our, our workers are parking on Council Street across from Church Street where there's street parking that's free all day. So we're, we're doing what we can, and I appreciate the, the scrutiny because we're, we're going to make downtown better and responsible development is an important part of that. That being said, my concerns for what they're worth are, this is a project that, and I don't expect you to approve a blanket permit for a year. I will come back as often as you like me to give you an update, but this is a project that's going to take longer than six months. It's going to be closer to a year. And again, I will come back. I'm not suggesting that you approve it for that. I'm more than willing to limit my working hours to 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and I will not park in those spaces on the weekend if that's what it takes.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions or caveats to how do we want to proceed?
I don't have a problem with Sundays. I think that's a really good offer. I would just ask on Fridays, is four o'clock possible? If not, I understand.
I, I will work with you. I mean, four o'clock on Friday, and if I don't have to, to come back every two months, I come back halfway through or something, that works better to me. I'll give you four o'clock on Friday. I'm not in a position where I can be demanding here. I'm here to work with you and ask and just try to explain what our process is and what my thought process is behind it. So if four o'clock on Fridays is what counsel would like to see, then we're more than willing to accommodate that.
Green, any suggestions on?
Mayor, Mayor, Council, of course, the restrictions are up to, to council on this, and so it, it is something, you've heard the developer proposed no working on weekends and to have those spaces freed up on Friday afternoons, four o'clock on. So trying to, to work with the city. Councilmember Clutz asked about maybe a 60-day. That takes it through mid-November, so gets in that holiday season. You could approve it for 60 days, have the developer come back, give you an update. And I know the holiday season downtown is busy, so how does that impact the, the parking on, on Main Street? So it, it's really up to you. I appreciate the investment into downtown. I appreciate, it sounds like this is a great project, eight units and some retail, I believe, on the first floor?
It's eight units right now, just to be honest, for what we're permitting.
No retail?
Not at the moment. We've got to get the apartments, there's a funding mechanism that we have to get the apartments up and running and the retail. And just to be clear about what my role is, I've been introduced to you as the developer. I'm the general contractor. I kind of do the jack-of-all-trades, so I can't speak to the, to the checkbook matters, but I do know what the, the plan is, to do eight apartments, and then once people start renting the apartments, to do the retail.
So that, that may be something counsel wants to consider, and I, I get it. He, he would rather have a longer term, but it lets counsel get an update on the progress. And is it still three spaces or two spaces? Or i- is he just working a couple of days during the holiday? That's the kind of feedback you could get then. And just to be clear, too, and Mr. Post pointed this out, I heard your concerns, thank you, but this is not the first conversations counsel has had about parking in the downtown and putting some limitations on those requests. So, thank you.
Any suggestions for how we want to proceed? Because we would have to make a separate motion to pass this tonight or move it to the next agenda.
When are you starting?
We've started, we started last week. We're under a temporary right-of-ways permit.
It's a two-week permit, starting last week.
And you remember, staff can approve for two weeks. Anything longer has to come to council, and that's why this is on the agenda tonight.
I, I don't mind approving it for the two months to see, and then getting back feedback and see how things are. I mean, we've got a project, and we're talking about there's lack of, you know, places to stay, so it's a benefit there, and it's, it's developing downtown, which we want to do. And just to see how things go. I, I don't have a problem with the two months, moving forward, just to see. And then if it works fine, the way that you're talking about, this is just for, pretty much it's for work trucks, it's not for dumpsters that we add. I know I've been here, we approved dumpsters outside. This is just for a work truck, correct?
So the ordinance is allow, allows me to-
Correct, correct.
I'm choosing not.
Yes, correct, correct. So I don't-
I'd like to hear from, you know, we have various things happening downtown. I'd like to hear from, from Seda on this, because she could say, well, this weekend is, this is planned, and that weekend is something planned. I mean, I think we can put something together, but we're kind of, maybe I'm the only one here. I'm shooting in the dark here because I can't tell you that on October, the whatever, something is planned for that weekend. And I know you would work around us.
We absolutely would. I mean, that's, it's kind of one of those things, if we had a calendar, we'd be more than willing to be block out certain dates, too. We're, we're here to be flexible. We, we have a job to do, and we don't have a lot of space to do it, so.
Well, what I heard him say is, he'd like three, only come back in three months. I know that puts us in December, because he'd like to minimize his activity here. I hear that. I think two months still doesn't enter the Christmas shopping season, so we would have to address it anyway. And if it's possible to get that done now, or the next council meeting, you know, with input from Seda, I mean, we have Busker's Bash and various kind of things happening. I'd just like to have that information in front of us before we make a final decision.
You don't think we could start the project even 60 days or 30 days or something? You could start and then have Seda or whoever develop something and come back to us in that period of time? I just don't see-
You have anything happening in the next 30s?
That's why, I don't know, like you said, but I think during that time, instead of waiting, I guess, because what we do if we wait too long, then when we do approve it, if we do approve, then we're going to push into something else later on to cheerwine and everything else that comes along, so.
Mayor, members of council, if you'd like, you, you could approve it for 30 days. Staff works with the contractor, developer, and bring something back. We work with Seda to review events and bring back a recommendation. The other thing to remember, this is right next to COB, City Office Building. Just down the street, the city owns a large parking lot. Is there an opportunity? I get if the crews are bringing materials, but is there an opportunity to use that parking lot to address some of the parking needs, too? And you don't have to answer now, but that's something that we could explore with you.
I think it's important context, because I reached out when I was applying for the right-of-way permit about the availability of parking. And the Plaza deal has limited parking behind our building because I wanted to lease a space, lease spaces in there. I was willing to pay for them, but those spaces are no longer available to me. I was also told, and I forget the staff member that reached back out to me, that the city owned a large lot, but that they weren't interested in leasing spacing at this time. So I, I mean, I've tried that, too.
Thank you. So that's an opportunity to, I guess, re-explore.
So, I guess my question is, oh, timing, between now and our next council meeting, is, it falls apart? Like your right-of-way use is evaporated, right? So could we do the extension of what you have today until the next meeting? That gets us time to give you an honest schedule and say, hey? That way, there's no surprises for you, no phone calls saying, hey, we got an event tonight. We don't want to do that to you. You're, you're investing in our downtown. Is that something that the council near town has said, we do this, then we can get a schedule, and then our next meeting, make sure we all know? And I, I think that's probably something that could be put on consent agenda at that point, without you actually maybe having to come back if we hammer that out. But I think we could approve until our next council meeting-
October 7.
The same spaces that you have.
It's three weeks, which is-
Mr. Green, do you know if any, are there any events or anything that we need to be concerned about over the next three weeks?
I'll look to Seda, I'm seeing-
Head shake.
Friday and Saturday, but it sounds like we can work with you on those.
So counsel, you all agreeable with us doing the extension for, until our next council meeting, three weeks? And then we can have a better schedule for you to try to be better partners, making sure we're doing that right? Is, is counsel agreeable with that? So for context, we might need to get that in the form of a motion, is that correct?
Right. I think you can read the motion as is, just instead of March 23, 2026, the next meeting is October 7, 2025, if, if that's okay with counsel.
Okay, great. Counsel, I would be welcome for a motion on this.
I'll prove, make a motion to approve a right-of-way use permit for the use of three parking spaces adjacent to 126 and 128 North Main Street from September 23, 2025 through October 7, 2025, in accordance with section 22-50 of the City Code for Work Being Performed at the, at the location.
Counsel, we have a motion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you so much for giving us some insight tonight.
Thank you for hearing me.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
And Mayor and Council will reach out to the contractor and, and others to talk about opportunities that we can then include on the consent agenda on October 7.
Yeah, like those extra, that parking lot and stuff back there. Yeah, great. Thank you, Mr. Green. Okay, counsel, moving on to agenda item number seven. Counsel to receive public comment. I will now open the floor for public comment. Each speaker will have three minutes to address counsel. The rules of procedure for public comments are located at the table in the back of the lobby and at the speaker's table. Before we begin, I want to reference item number 11 and our rules of procedure. Speakers will be courteous in their language and presentation. Personal attacks will not be tolerated and will be deemed out of order. I encourage speakers to be courteous in their language, respectful of council members, staff, and members of the public. Thank you. Connie, do you have anybody to speak tonight?
Mayor, no one signed up for public comments tonight.
Then I'm glad I read that. Thank you, Connie.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, counsel, move on to agenda item number eight. Counsel to consider a text amendment to the Land Development Ordinance and amend chapters 2, 4, 8, 10, 15, 16, 18. I don't know the rest of the cheer, as far as I got. To update the review process. Our presenter tonight is Planning Manager Victoria Bayless. Welcome, Victoria. Good to see you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members. So tonight, we have text amendment TA 2025-08-0009. City staff have petition for these changes in order to ensure a faster and smoother review process. The amendment also includes a few other items that staff deem to be crucial. It is a larger amendment, but staff felt that these changes were necessary to provide the public with a better development experience. Chapter two, we'll start off with that one. This one's a simple one. It's an amendment to the use matrix. Currently, government services are only permitted by special use permit and conditional district rezoning in every single district. So staff looked at what we felt were the appropriate districts that it should be permitted in, and we went with RMX, NMX, CMX, DMX, and HB and CI. Those would be, and government services is like the office buildings, the courthouse, things of that nature. Fire and police stations have their own separate use. Then moving on to chapter four, these amendments were really just to clarify certain items. The performance guarantee section is currently rather vague, so staff added some clarifying language there. And then the sidewalk requirements, as currently written, are very detailed, but a little bit confusing in certain instances. So we've also, we've altered that language as well. In chapter eight, we have made just one change, and this is related to major subdivisions. One of the triggers for a major subdivision can be if you're extending utilities, regardless of the number of lots that are being proposed. So for instance, currently, if you were only creating two lots, but you were, well, if you were only creating two lots, then normally that would be classified as a minor subdivision or an exception plot. It would not have to go through the major subdivision process. But if you were adding on a utility extension to that, that would trigger a major subdivision review. In those instances, that's when landscaping requirements kick in. And for instance, a two-lot subdivision or a three-lot subdivision, those can be extensive and a little bit onerous. So we've removed that for sub, that requirement for subdivisions who are classified as a major subdivision, which is only triggered by a utility extension. In chapter 10, this is another small change, and this was done to prevent overlooking fire code regulations in our dimensional table for parking aisle and parking size, parking stall requirements. We have zoning regulations that are based on whether it's two-way traffic, one-way traffic, if it's angled parking and whatnot. Our requirements are just zoning. There may be men, different minimum requirements, aisle requirements, if those accesses are used for fire. And currently, we don't have anything noted to that respect, so we've just added a note at the bottom of the table that reminds them that regardless of the minimum requirements noted in our zoning dimensional table, you may have to increase your aisle width depending upon fire code regulations. So it's just a reminder while you're doing your design and plan review. Then chapter 15, these are where the major procedural requirement changes have occurred. Major site plans are now triggered by a utility extension, right-of-way dedication, multi-family with 20 units or more, or a TIA. Minor site plans are triggered by expansions or additions, accessory structures over 400 square feet, more than one acre of disturbance, and multi-family with more than five but less than 20 units. Now, major subdivisions, it's just a small change. They still have the same triggers, but with the exception of subdivisions that are creating five lots would now be classified as minor subdivisions instead of major subdivisions. The other major change to chapter 15 is that special use permits, the approving authority for those would transfer from City Council to the Board of Adjustments. And this is really for the public. A lot of times, the public is confused by the different procedures. Special use permits have to go by quasi-judicial procedures, which are very different from the legislative procedures that you're used to with text amendments and rezonings. They are more like a court case, which most people do not understand. And so they want to come talk to their elected officials about things that concern them, but that's a no-no with quasi-judicial proceedings. And sometimes people who are testifying in the evidentiary hearing for a quasi-judicial proceeding, they, they may not have standing, what is called standing, meaning they are not permitted to testify, or their testimony can be stricken from the record, which most people are not going to understand. However, especially if you're doing a rezoning right before then, where they get up and speak and say whatever they want, but then you're restricting them on the next item. Board of Adjustment, they are used to the procedures, and every item that goes before them is going to be quasi-judicial. That is what they do. So this is, we thought this would be the better place for special use permits. Then moving on to chapter 16, staff has simply updated a checklist for plan submittals. And this is to ensure that we receive everything we need within that first plan submittal, so that we're not still looking for stuff and asking for stuff when we first get the plans. We have everything we need for that first plan review, and so that'll expedite the plan review process. And then finally, chapter 18 is very simple. We've added in a definition for a licensed design professional. So that is a lot, but we felt these items were fairly crucial and needed to expedite review processes and ensure a smoother process for our applicants.
Here, if I may, if I may add-
Yes, please.
Just one, one thing I wanted to bring to your attention is, is, first of all, thank you. We, in the budget, we were, were approved for new positions and reclassification of some positions, and- And what I would say is that has allowed us to hire some folks that have given us some capacity from reviewing plans and getting a little bit caught up. This is the kind of thing, actually, this is what Victoria was originally hired to do, was to write code. This creates efficiencies in our process. And so this is a reflection of staff working on these, Victoria putting a lot of these together, a group putting them together. And this is the kind of things that we're going to be bringing for you in the future to continue to streamline our process and create efficiencies in that process where we can. If you remember back to, we didn't have the gold coins at the budget meeting, or not the budget meeting, but the work session, but we had the card game where we pass things back and forth. And I think one thing that it highlighted was that it is a very involved process and one that we need to look at and make changes to. And so this is a beginning, and we're going to continue to work on those and bring those forward.
Great, thank you so much, thank you both. Counsel, any questions for Victoria or Phillip before we open it up to a public hearing?
Is this going to shorten that matrix that they have to work through?
Not really by that much. It changes the process for certain projects. So right now, for major versus minor site plans, a lot of that is dependent upon the size of the structure, which does not necessarily always correlate to the complexity of the project. So you may have a 20,000-square-foot structure that would classify currently as a major site plan, but it may be the same complexity as a 5,000-square-foot building that would be a minor. And as a minor, you only submit, you start out with construction drawing review, you don't have to go through TRC before you get to construction review. So it changes the process that is required. Does that make sense?
This has been a place to help, I know we're talking about maybe working with the county to speed up the process, certain things. Is this second language helping with that process, that speed up our stuff, something completely different?
Not really, this is pretty much internal to the city of Salisbury.
When you made your presentation at the retreat last year, I interrupted you halfway through, and I apologize again, but my concern was, at that time, was how many steps there were in the whole process and how long it took, because probably the number-one call that I get from citizens are developers and people like the gentleman before, or neighbors where development's happening and they're saying, you know, why is this happening? Developers say, why is this taking so long? And I know we were shorthanded, I'm glad you hired some extra people. But the process seemed to me cumbersome and slow. And I'm just wondering if it, especially with more people, whether this streamlines the process and speeds it up for people that are wanting, because we're growing, we have no choice but to deal with this.
It's going to speed up the process for some plans, for sure. I think our biggest help, honestly, has been the staff that we've had. And I think since we've hired a new planner, we've seen a definite shortening of review times. But procedurally, this will help shorten up times, particularly for site plan reviews, which is one of the biggest complaints that we've received, is that a lot of times with site plans, there's not that much differentiation between the TRC plan that is approved versus the construction drawings. There's always going to be a few more details, but for some site plans that aren't doing heavy utility work, there's not going to be a whole lot of significant changes between TRC and construction drawing review. So having more plans go, essentially skip that TRC step, is going to speed up the process for them significantly.
Yeah, counsel, any other questions before we hold a public hearing? Yes, Mr. Green?
Mayor, Members of Council, I'd just like to thank Phillip and Victoria and the team. And what's in front of you tonight are changes in the ordinance, your code, your building ordinance. And so to speed up the process, to look at efficiency, we have to look holistically. There's the code, there's technology, there's the education in making sure the development community understands the requirements, and a lot of steps along the way. And so this is just a part of it, but I wanted to assure council that staff's working hard. I appreciate council supporting additional resources for development services. I recommended that as part of budget. We're adding some contracts, we're reviewing technologies. You've heard about adding some staff, and there's still some positions to fill, but I didn't want you to think this is a silver bullet, you approve these seven, eight items, and magically it's better. It's a lot of work that this team is spending in trying to make sure the process is improved and is more efficient. One of the things I'd say too, Phillip has set up a development meeting with customers to hear what are some of those specific things. Is it a form? Is it a requirement? Is it just communication and education? So again, this is part of it, but just wanted to assure council, a lot of work's going in to looking at our development review process to make sure we're being responsive to our customers, but still manage that growth, as council has said, is a priority.
Thank you, Mr. Green. All right, with that, counsel, I will go ahead and I will open up the public hearing for anybody who wants to speak for or against any of the land amendment amendments we're looking at in all the chapters that Victoria mentioned earlier. Anybody who'd like to speak for or against? Seeing no one, I will go ahead. I was just waiting for you to sit down, Phillip. Close the public hearing. I figured that gave everybody enough time to walk up if they wanted, so. All right, Victoria, anything else to add to us?
No, I think we've hit everything. Unless you want to go over, I can hit the TRC and Planning Board items. I missed those in the presentation. TRC approved these at their August 14th meeting, and Planning Board did the same at their August 26th meeting, recommending approval.
Counsel, any further discussion or questions? If not, I would entertain a motion for approval or a motion for denial.
I'll make a motion that the City Council hereby finds and determines that adoption of an ordinance to amend the Land Development Ordinance of the City of Salisbury is under liner stricken here and is reasonable in the public interest, is consistent with the Forward 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Therefore, I make a motion to adopt an ordinance of any chapters 2, 4, 8, 10, 15, 16, and 18 of the Land Development Ordinance of the City of Salisbury.
Counsel, we have a motion, others in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you so much, Victoria, thank you for your details. Phillip, thank you so much for getting your team up running, and just thank you to your whole development team. I know you've recognized this as an opportunity, and these are the steps, so thank you all so much. All right, counsel, moving on to Agenda Item Number 9. Counsel to receive an update on the 2024 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, CAPER, regarding the use of Community Development Block Grant Funds, and receive an update on the programs and activities administered by the Salisbury Community Development Corporation. Our presenters are Planning and Neighborhood Director Hannah Jacobson, Planner Grayson Murray, welcome Grayson, and Community Development Corporation Executive Director Chonica Yadawara, welcome back, Chonica, good to see you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. We're pleased to be here tonight to give you an annual report on our community development activities. As you know, we are fortunate to receive community development block grant funds from the federal government each year, and it is a requirement from HUD that we report on the use of those funds and to have a public hearing. But CDBG is really just a piece of the community development pie in Salisbury, so we invited Chonica Yadawara from the Community Development Corporation to give us an annual report. And I am very happy to turn it over to Grayson Murray for her debut at City Council.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council, thank you for having me here tonight. Like Hannah said, we're about to go through an update on our community development block grant, and then I'll turn it over to Chonica. So we had four goals that were set in our original action plan. The first being an increase of the supply of decent and affordable housing in the city. We had originally set the goal of having two units developed. Due to increasing costs, we were able to complete one substantial rehabilitation, which I will let Chonica talk a little bit more about later. Our second goal was to provide assistance to public service agencies. Our original goal was to help 100 people with non-housing assistance and 150 people with overnight shelter and homeless prevention. Between our nine subrecipients this year, we were able to help a total of 771 people, so quite a bit above those goals. This includes 437 people assisted with overnight shelter and homeless prevention, and 334 with those non-housing concerns. So these are just a few of our public service partners, and I do want to take a minute to thank them and give them their credit, because we could not do any of the work that's been done in town without them. We have the easy part of giving them the money, and they do so much great work with it, and it's really been an honor since I've been here to be able to work with them and see what they do in our community. So I'm going to go very quickly through our public service partners this year. So our first one was Family Crisis Council, who served 111 beneficiaries this year, and they used our funding to support the salaries of a third-shift advocate for victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, and human trafficking. One Love Community Programs had 10 beneficiaries that they served. They provided case management and mental health, substance abuse assessments for an in-home treatment program that treats not only the individual, but their family as well, works with them to help them understand the issues they're facing. Bright Minds served 28 beneficiaries and provided after-school and summer camp care for students, and provided specifically transportation to eliminate the barriers to quality tutoring for low-to-moderate-income individuals. Rowan Helping Ministries served 326 beneficiaries, and they provided emergency shelter as well as case management to homeless persons, rent and utility assistance, emergency shelter, and quite a few other services. Rowan Literacy Council served 32 beneficiaries and provided one-on-one tutoring for illiterate adults. Triple Threats served 188 beneficiaries and allowed low-to-moderate-income ballet students to participate in and perform a production of The Nutcracker. The Bread Riot served 10 beneficiaries and was able to provide eight bags of fresh produce to 10 food insecure students between November and April. Meals on Wheels served 16 beneficiaries and provided the expansion of grocery deliveries to seniors who are able to cook for themselves but unable to get through transportation barriers to get out and purchase those groceries themselves. And then the Community Care Clinic served 50 individuals and offered free full or partial denture sets to those who cannot afford insurance. So our third goal was to effectively plan and administer programs, which we were able to achieve through our partnership with the Community Development Corporation and make, well, not achieve yet, sorry, I got ahead of myself. We made progress towards that, and were able to exceed those public service provision goals. Our next goal was to affirmatively further fair housing. And throughout this year, we've done several different initiatives to achieve that, including updating and distributing brochures related to landlord and tenant rights. Housing Advocacy Commission hosted its inaugural Rental Health Tenant Rights Expo, and we attended a wide variety of festivals, I won't go through and list all the ones that are up there, to hand out brochures related to tenant rights, collect survey responses, and engage in the community. That is all I have for you tonight, and then I will go ahead and turn it over to Chonica.
Thank you, Grayson.
Thank you.
Thank you, Grayson. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and staff. I appreciate you giving me the time to come and talk about what we've done in this past year in the city of Salisbury. Okay, as you all know, for the past 25 years, Salisbury Community Development has been a partner with the city of Salisbury to further their affordable housing goals. And as a nonprofit, we've been able to leverage more funding through North Carolina Housing Finance Agency, foundations, private donors, and that has assisted us in taking the funds the city gives us, also adding to those funds to provide affordable housing here. And in the past two years, we've had a private donor who had come to us and provided us with $100,000 annually from his IRA distribution to do urgent repair needs within certain neighborhoods that we have identified as need identified. And we have several, affordable housing is done. Most of our funding sources are, the city of Salisbury, North Carolina Housing Finance Agency provides most of our funding. And with our CDBG program, we do the substantial rehabilitation. We have an urgent repair program. This funding comes from North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. This is the Housing Trust Fund money, and we have been applying for this annually, and we've been receiving this fund for the last 15 years. And then we also get, we've been funded regularly with the essential single-family rehabilitation program. This allows us to do two or three rehabilitations with funding from North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. Unfortunately, this funding only comes once every three years. And then we have the funding the city has set aside to do neighborhood improvements, and this year, we have picked Chestnut Hill neighborhood as the neighborhood to work on. And then I missed that other thing we do is we also provide first-time home buyers with opportunities to buy homes. And we have partnered with North Carolina Housing Finance Agency, local banks, and the city of Salisbury to provide down payment assistance. And with today's housing cost going so high, the down payment assistance makes a big difference in making these homes affordable to our first-time home buyers, because we do not want to upset the real estate market here either. So the houses are sold at market, but how we make it affordable is through interest rate reductions and down payment assistance. And these are annual funding allocations. And this is the annual performance snapshot, which the funding we got from the city of Salisbury. We've done, finishing up the second CDBG project, and we have two additional projects that are under, well, getting ready to get its environmental reviews done, and we'll be doing another two this year with the funding we have. And then we also constructed two homes with the home funding we received, and these two homes are built in sexually acres, and there will be some pictures of the neighborhood of the homes that just were completed, just about, it's about 95% complete, but it is on the market today. And this is one of the CDBG projects that we did. This is, and most of our clients, and I know you're probably wondering, who are rehab clients? Most of our rehab clients are elderly. Most of our rehab clients are elderly, disabled, on a fixed income. That's our, I would say 99% of our clientele is that. Because, and unfortunately, these families have not had opportunity to, you know, with the cost of repairs going so high and materials going high, you know, and our housing stock is probably about 70 years old here in Salisbury, and some of them have not done a lot of things in their home. This gentleman actually had a roof leak, but he took out his 401K and put that roof on. But I will show you some, and I went to his home myself on this one. And, you know, we look at the structural hazards that are, and accessibility is one of the biggest problems we have. But we have also partnered with Independent Living, who's helping us do some of the ADA requirements in some of these homes. So sometimes we try to use funding from different sources, and they'll help us with the ADA requirements. Health and safety is a concern, and we are really trying to help a lot of these families stay in the home instead of having to go to assisted living. And here's what we get done. And here is, when I first went, this elderly gentleman actually had one of these tubs, and he actually has not been able to get into that tub for two years, he said. And he had, his bathroom was carpeted, and he had to take a sponge bath, he said, for the past two years. It is, and this home is located in the Park Avenue neighborhood. And then we were able to do a complete rehabilitation of his home and make it accessible to him. And here's, after the rehabilitation we did, this is, he, we had, unfortunately, he was, he only had one bathroom. And in CDBG programs, you have to relocate if you do a rehabilitation and they cannot stay in the house. So we did have to relocate him to get some of the work done, because, one, we had some lead hazard issues as well we had to address at this point. And this is just a quick. And this was the inside of his home here, and there were so many hazards here. He had a gas heater there, and he did not have a carbon monoxide detector. We quickly got him one till we could get to the rehab part of this. And here are some of the hazards he's had. And then here's what we were able to do with that home. We made it more accessible, because he, he's not using a wheelchair right now. But if he is, we made the hallways wider to help him stay in this home. And this is quick. And then these two, this was his front porch. He didn't have any handrails. He really had a hard time getting out of his house. Someone had to actually help him get out of his house as well. So we helped him with some accessibility issues as well. And then we have an urgent repair program and the Essential Single Family Rehab. Now, this urgent repair program, we only spend about $12,000 per home. We don't have to bring the home up to code. We, so all we do is work with the absolute urgency, and most of the time, what we're doing is some, there may be some structural issues that we address. Roofs are some of the main things we address, and heating and cooling as well. And usually, we do about 10 to 12 units with the funding we receive from North Carolina Housing. That should be 132 instead of 100. And this year, we were awarded 165, and they're going up this year to 15,000 per household. And these are the common issues we have in, and the problems we have in these homes. And then, then we have used the other funding we've received from this private donor who has given us $100,000. We've done four roofs. We've done two HVAC systems, and he's also set aside, he wants us to set aside money for the two homes we've built. He wants to provide $10,000 in down payment assistance in addition to the other down payment assistance to these home buyers as well. This was a home that we did the roof on with the donor funding. This is in the West End neighborhood. And just to kind of give you an update on the city's revitalization program, some of you may remember in 2018, the city started the neighborhood revitalization program, and we started in the West End neighborhood. We, we went to the West End neighborhood for three years, and then we went to Park Avenue on North Main for two years, and we've been in Eman Park for two years, and now we're moving that program to Chestnut Hill. And we have assisted 83 households. We have rehabilitated 83 homes with over $1.6 million from City's General Fund. And here are some of the things that we did in these homes. This is also what we did in Eman Park the last two years. And that's the funding we received, and we utilized every bit of funding that was required. And here are the, obviously, the high, always has been the roofing, windows. We had done a lot of painting, gutters, foundation repairs, and accessibility improvements as well. And this program has been extremely popular in the city. One is, we took this income guidelines to 120% of median income. Most of our programs are below 80%, and this also helped several other homeowners as well, which was really, really good. And also, it was very popular because it was a five-year loan term. We did get a lien on their property, but if they lived in the home for five years, it disappeared. So, and these are some befores and afters of these homes. And this was a carport that was failing that we redid. And the down payment assistance, between the city and the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency, we're able to get up to $85,000 in down payment assistance. And then in addition to our private donor, we'll have $95,000 down payment assistance for each family and who is below 80% of median income. And that has been a blessing, because without this type of funding, there's no way some of our first-time home buyers can purchase a home at that income. And these are the two homes that we've just finished constructing. These homes are, as you see, 1270 and 1280 North Shaver Street. This is in Satchville Acres, and if any of you know Satchville Acres, most of those homes are brick homes. So when we go there, when we go to any neighborhood, first thing we look at is, what does the neighborhood homes look like? And all homes are designed, and council member Clutz probably remembers that, when former Mayor Karen Alexander, she designed a lot of homes for us, and that was the first thing she's told me was, make sure whatever you build meets the standard design of that neighborhood. And that's what we've been doing for the last 25 years. And these are the two homes, and these are some of the inside pictures. And this is this home here, the second one. And these just went on the market. I don't think it's been on the market a week yet. And then I also want to thank, you know, we can't do it with just the city and the CDC. It takes partnerships. And this one is FNM Bank and United Way Day of Caring. FNM Bank has always been a partner on Day of Caring, and they've either helped us do something at a home, one of our new construction homes, or one of our repair program homes, and they've done painting, they've built fences, they've done yard work. So they've done a lot of different things, and we appreciate the partnership. It's not just the loans they've provided us, they've also given us more than that. That's what I got for you today, and if anyone has any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
That's all you got, really? Are you kidding me? Look at all that work. Wow. Thank you so much for sharing that, Chonica. That's great.
Absolutely. Glad to hear it.
That's great. Council, any questions while we have these folks in front of us before we have a public hearing?
Let's have a public hearing first.
Go ahead.
Oh, I was, you mentioned, I think I remember correctly, you mentioned disabled, elderly. Is veterans part of that, is the program?
Veterans too, we do, yes. Absolutely. Actually, the previous year, we did a veteran. Yeah. Veterans are part of it, actually, with the urgent repair program. One of the groups are the veterans, disabled, and elderly. Those are three categories they work with. They want us to concentrate on.
Thank you.
Suppose you have a question or comment?
I was looking, I was at a meeting this morning where presentation was made on the 2025 Community Health Needs Assessment that was done by Rowan County Public Health, a healthy Rowan, Novant, and United Way. We do this, as you know, every couple of years. It's the new model that United Way operates under as to who they are going to fund. And I'm going through 150 slides that they gave us. But the number one issue this year, which wasn't on the checklist last year, was homes, places for people to live. And I wish I could find it without y'all having to wait for me, but in any event, it was significant, and it was increasing. And I think this is wonderful stuff, but if, I'm going by memory, looking at your slides, that there were 14 homes touched this year, two new homes, and then there were three other categories that had various levels of repair. That doesn't, and it's great that people are living in substandard housing and were bringing it up to date, and I think that's wonderful. Some cities, Savannah and Charleston, to name two, because I have a friend that's been visiting down there recently, and because she knows that my interest in this, and I've discussed it with Hannah a little bit, is they're looking at tiny homes, you know, 150 to 400 square foot homes, which have, tend to have pretty high density. Homes cost anywhere from $30,000 to $50,000 usually, and they're not big, but, and to your question, it, there's a whole community in Savannah that's designing tiny homes, it's a tiny home community. It's got, I forget how many, it was four acres, and some are the order of 50, 60 homes for veterans. Have, given your limited funds and the fact that you'll end up spending on the down payment assistance, I mean, and we get two people into houses for that $100,000 bucks, when you get other money stacked on top of it, I think was a point you made. Have you folks explored the tiny home concept?
I have not explored it for Salisbury.
So, council member Post, I completely, I hear your concern about that there is a great need for housing, and have appreciated that the Community Health Needs Assessment has highlighted that as an issue, and completely agree. And one of the things that has given me hope over the last year is that we were selected to be a part of this cross-sector collaborative team. The CDC, city of Salisbury, FNM Bank, Carol Fisher Construction, and the Town of Spencer have created this team to go to Chapel Hill over an 18-month period and participate in our state, our homes. And so through that process, we're able to meet with a lot of other communities across the state and kind of compare solutions that work and learn from experts. And so I think solutions like tiny home communities, all of that is being discussed and explored kind of through that cross-sector collaborative. There's a lot of pros, a lot of cons associated with them, but it's something that we need to be open to thinking about, but I don't think we've explored that yet here.
I'm glad you're exploring it. I mean, running through my notes here, it looks like we've got, Rowan County does not compare well with state or adjacent county metrics on any number of things, including housing. And so, I mean, other than our rents, rents are pretty high, but we have the highest, second-highest number of seniors living alone.
Yes.
You know, like I said, compared to the state average and compared to our surrounding counties. So, I mean, we've got a few hundred, according to this, Community Needs Assessment, a few hundred homeless people, over half of which are unsheltered. And so, one of the things, problems they have actually run into in Savannah, you were asking about veterans, is they've got veterans that need homes, but they don't want a place. They'd rather, you know, tough it out on their own rather than have a, you know, somebody provide them with a roof over their heads. It's a tough lifestyle. So anyway, I'm glad you're looking at that. I mean, it is a way to get a lot of bang for your buck, and it's becoming more and more popular. I would also add that, you know, you think of tiny homes as, because you buy them from Amazon, and they come in a truck, and you take them out of a box and put it together. My daughter lives in Seattle, in a former area that was a former fishing village, and she has a Sears Craftsman home built in the 1940s. So it came in a box, was taken out, and was planted where she is more than 80 years ago, and she only paid one and a quarter million dollars for it. So, the point is, you know, these, what you think of as Lego houses or whatever, they do have, you know, they, they're not low-quality products. I mean, they can last. And so, I mean, we're not Seattle, but it's, you know, they're 25-foot-wide lots, I mean, really little lots. She's lucky, she's got two lots, so it's 50 feet wide. But, you know, they're little lots, and like I said, this was a house that cost $2,000 80 years ago, came in a box and a truck.
I would, Ms. Green, I would think that exploring different housing options would be a great topic at our retreat, for us to discuss these topics and things, because you, I mean, you have--
It's the number-one need right now.
Yeah, absolutely, for a lot of reasons, obviously, right? So I think that would be great, Ms. Green, if we can make sure that's one of our topics at our retreat.
Happy to do that.
Great, thank you. Council, any other questions? Hannah, I have a question. I know that we're gonna hold a public hearing, but we don't have any action tonight. This is just feedback to discuss our findings from this past--
That's correct, just to receive a report and hear public comment about it.
All right, well, with that, I will open the floor for a public hearing, for anyone who wants to speak. I don't know if "for" or "against" is the right thing to say, but who just would like to share any thoughts about our report, our annual report? Seeing no one, then I will close the public hearing. With that, no council action is required. Anything else from the team, besides "thank you all"? I have that to say.
Thank you.
Thank you for trusting in us to do this job for you.
Right, it, I'm sure you feel like you're on a hamster wheel, because you can't ever catch it, right? As much as good work as you put in. So, thank you for sharing all the great work you're doing, and keep doing it. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
All right, council, moving on to agenda item number 10. Council to receive an update on Monroe Street School. Presenter is our code enforcement manager, Michael Cotilla. Hello, Mr. Michael Cotilla. How are you today?
I'm good.
Great, thank you for being here. We'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor, Lieutenant, and Council. Back on June 17th, you heard from both Livingstone staff, as well as myself, on the current conditions of the school, as well as measures that would be taken by the Livingstone staff to bring this historic site into compliance. On June 17th, we presented council with the notice you see here, commonly referred to as the intent to repair letter, which is signed and notarized by Livingstone staff, agreeing to the terms for the eventual repair or replacement of-- agreeing to the terms for the eventual repair or replacement of all windows, doors, and the roof. The terms, excuse me, were as followed. Within 10 days to have the structure secured, provide a plan for full replacement of, excuse me, for full replacement or repair of the roof, windows, and doors within 60 days. Contracted, be under contract with a licensed contractor to obtain proper permits within 90 days, and the repair or replacement of all broken or inoperable windows, doors, as well as the replacement or repair of the roof, making it weather resistant within 180 days. We saw the before and after images of the unsecured windows and doors, or the before and the after, after they were boarded up. As we just saw, the first item on the list was quickly complied with. All windows and doors were secured. After that, we did have one instance where some boards had fallen off and peeled away from the, the frame of the windows. Those were reported to Livingstone staff and were quickly, excuse me, were quickly addressed and reboarded. But unfortunately, this is currently the only update I can provide. At this time, the second item, providing a plan of action, has not been received yet. The third item, identifying a contractor and pulling the necessary permits to begin work on the structure, to the best of my knowledge, has also not happened yet. Due to the inactivity from Livingstone and the failure to communicate an intent to come into compliance, Code Services has issued a $50 fine for failing to meet the requirements of the intent to repair letter. As you can see in this next slide, the aforementioned $50, excuse me, $50 fine that has already been issued, and an additional fine that is due to be issued tomorrow, unless we hear tonight from Livingstone staff that Livingstone is prepared to share the info required to stay in compliance with the intent to repair letter. Moving forward, if Livingstone fails to comply with its intent to bring the school into compliance, or show significant amounts of improvements to the school after 180 days of the signed notice, as seen here in the compliance fee schedule, this will result in an additional $100 fine, and finally, a $100 per day fine until compliance has been ascertained. Mayor and council, what you've heard from me tonight is not meant to sound threatening in any way. It is simply the tools available to us to hold property owners across the city accountable for the conditions of their property. Thank you for your time, council, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Livingstone is here, if you'd like to hear from them as well, they're, I'm sure they'd be willing to come up and provide an update.
Counsel, do you like to hear from Livingstone?
Sure.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Cotilla.
Thank you for the report.
Hello?
Good evening.
Welcome.
Mayor, council members, staff, thank you for your time tonight. Like to, you know me, like to introduce Renal Harris, he's an architect with Harrison Smith LLC, and you are aware that Karen Alexander was very involved with Livingstone on this particular facility and many others. So, we have asked Mr. Harris to get involved here to help us with this. We're very happy that he has agreed to do so. I'm going to read just a little bit of an update, and then we can answer questions, and I think we can, I think you'll get a good feel for where we are and what we're doing, okay? In terms of the roof replacement, we have contracted with Mission Unlimited Roofing Company. They will perform a total roof replacement on the building. They will also replace the stone coping and will not compromise the historic integrity of the building. They have begun the mobilization and will start the project on October 6th, 2025, so just not long from now. That roof replacement will take approximately four months to complete. You have been up on the, yeah, so Mr. Harris, along with roofing contractor, has checked it out thoroughly, which of course they needed to do, and, and this is, is the direction we're going. As you know, the, the building has plenty of abatement issues. College has been notified that the building has mold, asbestos, and lead-based paint in the building. Once the roof is replaced, the building will be fully abated from environmental hazards. And then as to the windows, windows and doors replacement, we have hired Harrison Smith. They will develop drawings needed for the replacement of the windows and the doors. Since the building is listed as a historic building, the replacement must follow the national standards for renovations of historic buildings. So that's where we are at this point. So we have checked, checked it out thoroughly and now have a, a plan for that. Do you want to make any comments or just see what, what questions? Be glad for you two.
Whatever questions you have, I'll answer. I think you've outlined where we are right now.
Well, first of all, thank you for being here. It's nice to meet you. At this point, I would just turn it over to council, if you have any questions. Received an update from code enforcement, just heard a promising update, Pete, from you, which is great to hear, but I definitely will turn it over to council for any follow-up questions. Counsel?
Question I have, you said abatement has to be done once the roof is done. What about the aesthetics, the outside, the windows and things of that sort? When would that, that take place after?
Yes, the, the condition of the building, you have to repair the roof first before we can do anything on the inside. Before we can have anybody working in the building to replace the windows, we have to abate the building. But the, the mold is developed because it was exposed, the elements, and then we've had an environmental company come and test. There is lead-based paint everywhere, and there's asbestos throughout the building. So the next step is to abate the building, then we can replace the windows. But while the roof is being repaired and the abatement is happening, our firm will be doing drawings that we have to do for the replacement since it's a historic building. So we're going to be trying to working concurrently to all of that actually happening. I would suspect it, the roofing company says it's going to take about four months to do their work. The abatement company is going to take about a month to a month and a half to do theirs because it's a pretty, pretty challenging condition currently on the inside. But by that time, I think we should go through the approval process for submitting drawings for the exterior, which would be the window replacement. The college has also put a plan together for the securing of the building, that they're going to then add new fence and as well as security cameras and exterior lighting.
Mayor, I, I have a question. Does the college have a plan for the building?
Knew you were gonna-
Beyond the roof and the windows?
Yes. Yes, can't get into too much detail, but been, as I think I've said before, tremendous discussion, and I, I think it's safe to say that we will use the building for additional academic purposes. And part of that relates to our enrollment growth that, that we're experiencing, as well as the desire, and I would say need, to expand our academic programs. So that will certainly be part of what goes on. We, we intend to, whatever happens, we, we have a great desire to make sure not only that it addresses our academic needs, but also is a benefit to the community. So we'll be looking at all that as we continue the process.
Do you-
But these things will have to happen regardless.
Do you, are you working with your consultant about historic preservation tax credits?
Absolutely. We, we've been doing that all along with the renovation on campus as well, which Mr. Harris is our architect for that, so he's been deeply involved with us for quite a while now.
Right.
But that's obviously a very important source of funding for it.
Well, it is, and, you know, this has been a really difficult issue for me, seeing this building being neglected, because of the time I spent in Raleigh fighting for North Carolina Historic Preservation Tax Credits, and, and that really was for all cities and towns in North Carolina. And so now that they're available here, and I know you're using them in other, on other parts of the campus, but they are available, you know, on this building. I guess it's just been very frustrating for me to come back after eight and a half years and to see this building continue to sit there and deteriorate, because historic buildings will not last forever, and, you know, they, they have to be saved. So to me, it's difficult because this is such a historically significant building in the city. And it is because it's not just that it was a school, but even more importantly, because it was a historical African-American school. And many of our citizens here, I know one here is on the council with us, actually went to school there. But, you know, as much as we want to wait on this building to be renovated, I think we as a city council have a tremendous responsibility to our citizens, to this neighborhood, and to the city, to ensure that we follow our strategic plan, which, which I will quote, that was adopted by this council, "to eliminate blight by continuing to work with property owners and neighborhoods, to enforce nuisance minimum housing regulations and pursue redevelopment opportunities for sub, for substandard and vacant properties." And, you know, this building is not only an appearance problem, because it has become such an eyesore for the community, but it's a serious health and public safety issue as well. So we have, you understand, we have no choice but to do all we can to make sure that you do something about this as soon as possible. So I hope that that's going to result in positive actions by Livingstone to bring this back.
Thank you. I think you're hearing that that is the case, and I guess we haven't said this exactly, but the intention is not to fix the roof, do the abatement, fix the windows, and stop. That's your understanding, correct?
That's correct.
Right, but then to continue on with the renovation of the building, but these things have to be done first.
Good, good.
So I, I have a question. Beyond the roof and the windows, has overall structural integrity been examined? How, how far into the bones of the building are you going to have to go to restore it?
The, I guess I, I'm new to this body, so I'll just speak from a standpoint of where I am today, being involved. I was a part of a board meeting today, where we actually did present a larger plan for the building that was unanimously adopted by the board. As it was stated, it is going to have a strong academic mission. So, yes, we will, once we abate the building, then we'll do a structural integrity look at the building. And I've been asked for us to, to, to take it to that next level. So there is a plan, and the institution is behind the plan, not just to solve the things that are on the default list, but actually to go to another step further. So I can tell you from that standpoint, it has gone to the Board of Trustees, and they're aware of it. I told them I was coming to this meeting, so it's, it's at that level, and so there's a serious plan for the building to be used by the college.
And my second question is around the aesthetics of, of the building. As we talked about the last time you were here, Mr. Teague, we kind of think there's some basic things that can be done, such as the overgrowth around the building that could be taken care of, those sorts of things. Is there, is there a plan to do that at all?
Yeah, I, I, yes, beyond just simply cutting the grass, yes. We had, I had a conversation with the landscape company that the college uses, that you'll see changes that are going to occur, not just with the roof, but just in general with facility. The, before the new fence comes, it's just even fixing the fence that's actually there. So, so I'm kind of involved in, in giving some direction for that to happen.
So the vegetation that's all around the building is-
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
What I'm hearing is, I mean, we have a timeline which isn't going to be met. I appreciate your being honest about that, and, because I think that's important, that you be honest about it rather than make a promise and not keep it. It's more important to keep your promises. But what I'm hearing is, and I've had some buildings that have had roof replacements, and I've had to abate mold and asbestos and all that. And my experience was is, oh, it's going to take about a month to put, a month and a half to do the roof on my building, it's about 70,000 square feet, something like that, whatever it is, 40,000 square feet. It took about double the time. And the asbestos abatement and the way people in hazmat suits and getting the, you know, dealing with just getting set up before you could do anything took a significant amount of time. So what I'm hearing is that we're probably looking at a year before you can realistic, I mean, you said six months, four months, and then another two months to do the abatement. I'd be surprised if you do the abatement there in six, six weeks. Consider it took me six weeks, and my building's a lot smaller, was a lot smaller. So, I mean, I'm hearing at least six months to get to that point. And my thinking is, is we're going to, I guess they're asking us, they haven't asked yet, but my gut is they're asking us for X amount of time to get these three things done, the roof, the abatement, doors and windows. I mean, that, that's what's on the agenda right now, right?
Yes.
I'd really like, if, if we're going to give them, we're going to give them extra time because they're going to run into the, a brick wall in that 180 days, and, because they're already two months in. They told us they're not going to finish that in 180 days, they just told us that. I mean, I'd like to have a really realistic timeframe here, because I don't want them to come back and say, oh, we've, we're doing this, we're doing this, but we're not there yet. That's, that's my thinking.
Obviously glad to keep you updated, you know, no need to come to every meeting because there wouldn't be enough to report, but from whatever, you know, is a reasonable, you know-
I mean, do you really, I mean, Mr. Harris, I mean, can that roof be done in four months, do you think?
That was the, the number that was given to us by the contractor. I don't think that's realistic, but I'm not a contractor, I'm an architect.
Bingo, I agree with. And what about six weeks to, I mean, how long, I mean, how many square feet is that building?
No, it's about 60,000 square feet.
Mine was 25,000, and it took a, it took a couple of months.
Yeah, no.
So I don't, can, I mean, in your opinion, you're, that you're a professional at this, can that be abated in six weeks?
No.
Okay, so you're-
I, I'm only can give you what I was given in writing.
I get, I get it. So you're bringing promises to us that have been made to you?
Sure.
Okay.
Now, it, it was made to us parenthetically-
Right.
Till they get in, you know, we have, with the roof, once you take off the insulation, there may be floorboards, I mean, roofboards have to be replaced, there may be structural damage. We didn't know that there was a, probably a small fire in the building. I guess before it was boarded up, someone was in there, so. But what I can tell you is that the college has made a strong commitment to not just fix the building, but actually to utilize it for future use academically.
That's the critical piece.
Right, we, we have it. Our, our firm was also hired to do their new campus master plan, so there is a, a larger master plan that is fault, this, this building is now falling into the third phase of that master plan, which is coming up now.
Gotcha. I think you bring up a lot of questions. I think those will be things that we'll have to talk with us, with Officer Cotilla and Mr. Green. But while we have you guys here right now, are there any other questions for Mr. Teague and Mr. Harris? No, so thank you all very much for being here and sharing good information and hope. So with that, I would ask Mr. Cotilla, if you can come back up, and then Mr. Green, then we can go back to that timeline, Michael, and, and, and see that, and then let, let us have a conversation on next steps, so.
Take time.
If we can look at that timeline, and then, Mr. Green, kind of turn it over to you for a moment.
So first, I'd like to thank Mr. Teague and Mr. Harris for providing the update tonight. It's big for me to know that there's a plan in place and that the wheels are moving in the, in the right direction. Also want to make it perfectly clear that with, like with any intent to repair letter, as long as we're seeing movement, as long as we're seeing progress, that 180-day compliance deadline is extendable.
That's something that doesn't have to come back to you. That's.
Yes, sir, that's internal.
So Mayor, Members of Council, I too would like to thank Mr. Teague and Mr. Harris for sharing that and that commitment and investment that the college is making into this important historic structure in our community. So thank you for sharing that, that commitment and that investment. So as Mr. Cotillo said, he works with property owners all the time. He's looking to see that commitment and see those opportunities. And hearing that tonight, a couple of options, I guess. One is for, council's been very interested and very concerned on this property. Council, if you wish, can extend those deadlines that you set previously. As part of that, I would recommend, if that's something you want to do, that we also work with Mr. Teague and Mr. Harris to have another update at some point, hear how it's going, and Michael can be a part of that as well. And we want to continue to partner with the college and assist however we can on this. The other option is to turn this back over to code enforcement and let them continue to work. And again, Michael does this with other properties, but I think with the interest from council and the community on this, having council continue to hear those updates from the school and from staff are important. And so I would ask you to, I guess, consider those two options. If it's something we heard six months, and I think Mr. Post is, right, that's a lot of work, but still that, that commitment and beginning that work is what's important in funding this project. So we can, council can extend it six months, and we can work to bring about an update after 90 days or so, but it's really up to council. Michael, give you an opportunity again to share any thoughts on, from a code enforcement standpoint.
So having been inside this building, I can tell you that the abatement alone is every bit of a six-month project, at the very least. Four months for the roof is a little aggressive, in my opinion. It may take a little longer than that. But again, we are fully prepared to, to work with Livingstone as long as we continue to see the improvement to the structure.
Mayor, I'd like to maybe ask them to come back in a couple of months, two or three months, just to hear about the progress. And I'd like to thank Mr. Cotillo for the, for this, staying on top of it, and I'm assuming he'll continue to do that, and the excellent work that he does. He does a tremendous job for us, and it's not an easy one, I'm sure. But thank you for what you've done, and thank you for this.
Then I have a question. As far as fines, you said $50 has already been applied.
Yes, sir.
You go to that.
Based off. Oh, sure.
Based off that, what was discussed today is, did that comply now without having to do the 100, or is it still that?
So the next thing I was going to mention is I'm going to need to probably set something up with Livingstone, Mr. Teague, or somebody else from Livingstone, and Mr. Harris to get a better understanding of timeline before I can make that decision on the next $100. It seems like we're moving in the right direction, though.
So, so council, we're all kind of head shaking. Are we agreeable to saying that we got a promising report this evening? Excited to meet Mr. Harris, who's on board. And it's always nice to see Mr. Teague bring the, bring the word that we will work for another month, whatever month. Mr. Cotillo, we might leave that up to you, as you will be the one keeping an eye on to come back, give us a report, and see where we're at on the progress.
Absolutely.
So I know October 6 is a great day to see the contractors. Right, I heard that date, so there you go. Mr. Green, any suggestions on that?
I was just going to say, based on Councilmember Clutz's recommendation, if council would consider a 90-day update, that's, today was 90 days from your original conversation, and so with Mr. Harris, Mr. Teague, and Mr. Cotillo coming back in that 90-day period for an update and hear how it's going, if that's okay.
That sounds agreeable to me. There's nothing to make a motion on or anything. We just agree to that?
We can do that, and it sounds like council is turning this over to staff to continue to work with the college and address any code enforcement issues, but also to stay involved in the work that's planned.
Yes. All right, great. Well, thank you so much for your hard work, as always, and your teams, and thank you, Livingstone, for taking Monroe Street School seriously. I'm excited to see what these plans are, undisclosed plans, but I'm glad to hear that I heard a full Board of Trustees voted for it, so that's always good news. So thank you all so much for being here this evening. Council, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number 11. Counsel to receive an update on a downtown parking study. Our presenter is Economic and Downtown Development Director, Seda Troutman. Welcome, Seda.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and Council. I'm here to give an informational update on the downtown parking study request for qualifications process. This was a project approved and highlighted during the budget process earlier this year. And so essentially, what we will be doing is looking for a firm to conduct a parking study for downtown, or a portion of downtown. So I will walk you through what we're looking for, what we hear from council, what we want the process and the timeline to look like, and then, of course, I'll be looking for any feedback from council as you've been able to review the RFQ as it, before it goes out to get any feedback. So this does fall in the strategic plan under the Economic and Workforce Development focused area. Couple strategies in play here, including undertaking ventures for redevelopment, as well as promoting an environment to support small business development. The proposed area I just mentioned, it's not the entire downtown. It is a portion of downtown focusing on the South Main Street corridor. This is an area that is seeing a really large increase in the amount of development that's happening, especially in two particular projects. Not only the buildings that are being developed or redeveloped, but also what is being proposed as part of those projects. So you can see my mouse. In the cor, oh, corner of Bank and Main, that is where 130 South Main is, or the former Wells Fargo Building that the Parks and Rec Department is currently housed in, looking at making that an event space, so bringing quite a few people to downtown on event days. Then the next block is the Empire Hotel block. And that, actually, I was one block off, that's Fisher Street. This is 130, and then this is the Empire Hotel. And that also will bring a significant number of people in downtown, and we anticipate that that will have a large impact on parking in this area. So this is why this is the area that's being focused on. This is where, again, development is happening, but also the type of development is bringing a higher number of cars than we would see with maybe some, you know, single apartments that may only bring one or two vehicles. So the goals for the study, as mentioned, significant investment and growth, and so we want to capitalize and make sure we are responsibly growing with the city. As we see a generated increase in parking demand, we want to know what we're dealing with. So the project will provide a comprehensive analysis of current parking supply and demand, access and multimodal connectivity, to make sure that we can support the anticipated growth in commercial, residential, hospitality, and event activities. I want to focus on the multimodal connectivity part of that. In addition to parking, the city also always seeks to ensure safe and efficient pedestrian, bicycle, and transit access to those facilities as well. We don't just want parked cars, we want people being able to utilize multiple types of transportation to make sure, again, the growth is responsible in the city. As we're looking at the scope of services, what we're looking for a firm to provide to the city, we're looking at four main areas. We want existing conditions analysis, so again, what we currently have. And I want to make it clear, we're looking at private and public here. We're not just looking at public, what the city provides to the citizens. We want to know what private options there are as well. Are there opportunities to partner, or are there opportunities for the private sector to be providing services in this parking sector in addition to what the city has? We're looking for stakeholder involvement. This is very important, I imagine, to council as well as staff. We want to hear from key boards, property owners, businesses, developers, people that will be directly impacted by the demand of parking increases, but also by the process of a parking study. And that, again, includes city staff and council as well. So we're looking for a firm that will be open to partnering with the public and hearing from these stakeholders as they're assessing what we currently have and what future needs are going to come up as the growth continues. And so, again, they'll be providing a future needs assessment. We are looking broadly at this. I mentioned multimodal, but specifically in terms of parking. We want to know how private and public can be utilized in partnership, and we want to know what infrastructure looks like. I mentioned this on a, on a next slide, but we're going into this with an open mind. We're not coming and saying that we expect, you know, surface lot only or parking deck only. We're looking at all options and what the firm can tell us makes the most sense for the future growth of the city. And then that will include the preparation of draft recommendations. You'll see that in the deliverables. That will be a final downtown parking and mobility plan that will be presented to city council and the public. Again, the stakeholder input is very important here so that we're not just working in a vacuum. We want to be working in the scope of the whole ecosystem of downtown. I emphasize the note that the city is using this opportunity to explore all options for future parking growth, not specific types of infrastructure. And then there will be appendices and other maps and data that we'll be able to use ongoing, again, not just in my department, but in many departments throughout the city, to best utilize this information. We have the process lined out and a speedy timeline is where we're wanting to make sure that we get this done expediently and in time for all of the exciting development that is happening. So including any feedback we receive from council tonight, we anticipate releasing this RFQ this week, hosting a meeting. So anyone who's, any firm interested in submitting is invited to join me at City Hall for a meeting on October 1st, where they'll be able to ask questions, walk around the actual project footprint so they understand what it looks like and what we're working with, as well as perhaps seeing what, what parking demands there are currently on the time and day we're doing it. They'll also be able to submit any questions, to which we will respond by October 8. And then October 22nd, all submissions are due. And then we get into the fun part of evaluating, so all submissions that come into the city, there is a team that I have tapped already, and they have been kind enough to grace me with their knowledge on RFQs, as this is my first time executing one. But members from transportation, public works, finance, probably other departments I'm missing off the top of my head, they have done a fantastic job of reviewing the RFQ before it was sent to council so that they understood what was included. But they'll also be able to help evaluate each of the submissions and potentially interview potential firms as well. Once a selection is made on the most qualified firm who's able to deliver what the city is looking for, that notification will occur, and we will ultimately bring that back to council so that you will have the updated information on what that contract looks like, which firm is selected, and forward progress on what the timeline looks like for the, for the parking study. Couple important notes I wanted to include. I mentioned at the beginning, this is approved in the budget. This was mentioned by city council, so this is money that has been allocated. We don't know exactly what this contract number will look like, but we've started with $40,000, and will continue to work with the finance department as we work through this process. Also an important note, because I anticipate it will come up, and it will be accessible to all of the firms who are interested in applying for this. A downtown parking study was completed in 2019. It was more broad. It encompassed the entire municipal service district or downtown area, and the results were less focused on future impacts and more focused on what the current demand on the city was. Though I will note that they made several recommendations in that parking study, a few of which have been implemented, such as increased parking fines, hiring full-time parking enforcement, among some other recommendations. And the Transportation Department also made sure to let me know that the city's currently undertaking a citywide multimodal plan. So again, I emphasize the importance of not just relying on vehicles that have such a strain on the infrastructure of downtown, but also looking at ways we can incorporate other modes of transportation. So that will be something that's happening concurrently, but also available as we finish this process and begin the parking study. So there's no action required tonight. Again, the RFQ had been given to all of you to review, and I will happily answer any questions or take any feedback on what that RFQ looks like. You will receive a second presentation, as I mentioned, and request to approve the contract for services once a firm has been selected. But at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Seda, thank you for that update. Counsel, any questions for Seda this time? Nope. All right, well, Seda, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We look forward to getting somebody on board to help us on the south end. Is that the south? Yeah, the south end. All right. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 12, City Attorney Report.
No, ma'am, nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Correa. Number 13, City Manager Report. Ms. Green.
Mayor, Members of Council, we're getting into that most wonderful time of the year. I don't just mean the holiday.
Pumpkin spicy?
I mean, leaf collection season. So I've asked Chris Tester, our Public Works Director, to come tonight just to remind council and public about the schedule and about the requirements for leaf collection.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Green. Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Protem and Council. Just giving you a quick update, we're about a month away from loose leaf collection. It begins on October 13th. The entire city will be collected that first week. Just want to give some updates. Must have your leaves set out by 7:00 a.m. Monday morning on the collection week. Crews will make one pass per week. Once your area is serviced, they will not return until the next scheduled week. Leaf pile guidelines, leaves only, no trash, limbs or debris. Place your piles parallel to the curb, not in the gutter. Piles can be five foot deep. There is no height limit. Maintain three foot of clearance from obstacles like mailboxes, poles, and vehicles. Communication resources and information is being, will be on the October lamplighter. Residents can find the schedule and track progress with the interactive tools on the leaf map located at salisburync.gov backslash leaf. And that is our update for leaf collection. Do you have any questions?
Thanks for the heads up. I've already seen some piles starting to form, because it's, you know, it's pumpkin spice season, so it starts happening right now, so.
They still need to be bagged at the moment, so.
Bag, that's a great point. If you had them out now, you.
Bagged or containerized.
Bagged or containers until October 13th. Great, thank you for mentioning that.
Mayor, Council, let me just. Mayor, Council, let me just thank Chris and Public Works, leaf collection, important service. It is hard, hot, dirty work, and, uh, it lasts for months. And I don't know if you remember how many pounds or tons of leaves were collected last year?
Yeah, I, I think, if I, if I recall correctly, Michael equated it into a football field about, I think it was seventy-five to a hundred foot deep, is, is about the equivalent.
A lot of leaves, and so I, I just want to thank and give a lot of credit to Public Works for the time in providing this important service, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Green, anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, moving on to council comments. Council, any comments this evening? Nope, nope, three headshots, all right. Uh, Mayor Protem, Mr. McLaughlin.
Um, yeah, just, you know, just reminder, you know, we had some shooting the other day, a few houses down from my house, and I'd like to thank the first responders for their quick action, um, and it was chaotic. But you know, just on the last few days, we have shootings at schools, public, uh, officials, um, public speakers, things of that sort. You know, we're all human, we all have unique and different, um, ideas, and I just wanted to read something that, uh, one of my, uh, author wrote. Saul, who's also known as Paul, wrote, "Love is patient and kind. Love does not envy or boast, it is not arrogant or rude. It does not insist on its own way, it is not irritable or resentful, it does not rejoice at wrongdoing, but rejoice with truth. Love bears all things, believes all things, hopes all things, endures all things." So I just hope to remember, we got to, you know, we had threats against HBCUs recently and all that stuff, you know, we got to all come together, and, and you hear something, you know, just remind people what, what love is, that's all I have to say, so, thank you.
Thank you, Harry. Thanks for the reminder. Uh, moving on to mayor announcements and comments. First of all, uh, I would like to thank Lori Mack, who's a Granite Quarry Council member. She has been attending our meeting tonight, so welcome, Lori. Glad to see you sitting out there. Also, uh, we did a lot of work on land development services tonight, and while it looks like bullet points on the paper, that's a ton of work. And I want to thank that Land Development Office specifically, and I know on one of our consent agenda items, we discussed a, or we approved a partnership, so to speak, about going into an agreement with Rowan County to look at relocation of our Land Development Services Department. This is just a, this is not doing that, this is just saying we're exploring our opportunities and our partnership with Rowan County, just to clarify that. Uh, it's an opportunity for space and, and ease of developers and, and sharing of ideas, but it's just an exploratory look. So there's no decision that's been made on there, just because it was on the consent agenda. I'd also like to say, um, and I'm going to, always use Salisbury Post, um, I'd like to just show up this picture very quick of Mr. John Noble. Um, he passed away, uh, since our last meeting, and, um, this gentleman was a true public servant. He was a great partner to all. He served four decades as an East Spencer Alderman. He served four decades at our Sheriff's Department. So I just wanted to make sure that, um, you know, you, you mentioned all the things about loving and looking toward other people and, and being kind and things. And, and I think, uh, Mr. Noble, over his four decades, I can't imagine all that he saw and, um, how he managed to keep doing a great job. So I, I just want to say, uh, Mr. Noble, you will be missed. Also want to mention the fact that September, uh, is Hunger Action Month. We got a chance to see a lot of, um, great work through our housing, uh, groups tonight, uh, with our partners. And, and those partners don't extend, they extend past that. So some of our really good partners that we work with that work on hunger action and feeding our citizens, Rowan Helping Ministries, obviously our Salvation Armies, there's tons of churches that have food pantries, we have blessing boxes, Meals on Wheels, all these folks help. And Hunger Action Month is a nationwide campaign that happens every September, help raise awareness about food insecurities and how you mobilize communities to take action against hunger, and we have that happening right here. And so I just would have been remiss if we don't mention and thank people who do volunteer, because a lot of this is volunteer work, their time for doing that. Red Riot is a huge part of making sure that we have these kinds of things happen across our county, uh, as well. So I just want to make sure that we recognize that. And on to our announcements. Parks and Rec Department will host, uh, Festival de la Independencia Latin Americano Saturday, that's this Saturday, uh, from three to seven PM at the Bell Tower Green. The event is free and open to the public, and will feature food trucks, a parade of flags, craft and resource vendors, and a variety of live entertainment. For more information, please call seven zero four two one six play. Uh, we were discussing downtown events earlier. The Twelfth Annual Busker Bash will take place on Friday, October third, twenty twenty-five, from five thirty PM until eight PM. The public can vote for their favorite performer using pickpacks available for free at various downtown locations. The winners of the Busker Bash will be announced at New Seren Brewing at nine PM. For more information, please call seven zero four six three eight five two three eight. The Parks and Rec Department, in partnership with the Hurley Foundation, will host its annual Monarch Butterfly Release on Sunday, October twelfth, at twenty twenty-five, at two PM at the Hurley Park Annex. This event is free and open to the public, and will include the release of monarch and painted lady bug butterflies. For more information, please call seven zero four six three eight five two nine eight. And the fifteenth annual, fifteenth annual, wow, I can't believe it, fifteenth annual Blockworks Neighborhood Improvement Project will take place on Saturday, October the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, in the four hundred and five hundred blocks of best street in the Jersey City neighborhood. The Community Appearance Commission and the Housing Advocacy Commission are seeking volunteers to help paint exterior of homes, t-shirts, gloves, drinks, meals, and all the tools you can imagine will be provided. I improvised on that part, so. Please, we do need volunteers. It's great to have groups of volunteers, so you can volunteer and sign up by visiting SalisburyNC.gov backslash Blockworks by Friday, October third, twenty twenty-five, and we do take volunteers the day of. The October third deadline is your t-shirt deadline, so, but we do take volunteers, so any group out there that's listening in the ether can say, hey, let's go help out. And I think that's all of my announcements tonight, so, uh, council, I would love a motion for adjournment. You have a motion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Uh, motion, we are adjourned, thank you.